I read the lead just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes.
I'll make the motion we suspend the reading of the minutes for last month.
Second.
And move in second, we suspend the reading of the minutes from previous speaking. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Department head reports, Mr. Havlin.
Good morning.
Morning.
We, uh, last week they were, they did some, put some hot mix down over on Wilson Creek and they've done some tree trimming. Their tractor's broke down right now, the one for trimming trees, so it's gonna be a while before they get it back out. We had over a park for it. But we've, uh, been trying to mow the road sides. They've been putting some cans in, they put two cans in last week. And, uh, spray patching, that's about what we've been trying to do, keep up.
Okay.
We got some more ditch work to do, we're gonna roll some banks back up and posing on some roads. The farmer said we can create a better ditch way on them, they just roll them out in the field while they're not using them right now. So that's a plus for us.
Right.
As soon as they get done maintaining roads, we'll be up there doing that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Jay, you wanna mention about those trucks and the driver?
About what?
The trucks and, and the driver, the recall.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've, we got a recall on our, uh, brackets, on our tanks, on the hydraulic tanks, on the new trucks. And we gotta take them, call for burgers and they're gonna send the driver up to get them, and they'll rotate them one at a time in and out. They was talking about coming up to garage to do it, and they said it's easier for them to do it down there, so they've got all their material down there and they're, it's not, it's, it'd be a big hassle for them to try to do it up here.
But they won't, they won't have them, they won't have them long, right?
No, they'll take one down and fix it and then bring, bring it back, get another.
Yeah, okay.
And we don't have to have them all down there at the same time.
And they're using a driver, so we don't have to use one of ours.
Yeah, we'd do it, I'd have to initially start out with two drivers, take them down, take one down, bring him back, and then when we got done, I'd have to send somebody along where they can pick him up. This way they're, they're happy to do all that.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we don't have to mess with it.
That'll be fine. Okay, thanks, Jay.
Thanks, sir.
Bill Gray, Bill Gray. Come see.
No, I haven't heard. He is, he is a man short, so.
Yeah, I know. I, I do know our step problem out here, where we're trying to get, uh, concrete man to fix the, we're having an awful hard time getting anybody to give us a quote on fixing those steps, but we gotta get it done. Ben?
Morning.
Morning.
Um, pieces for the security system are starting to be delivered, so I'm beginning inventorying that and starting that process. Uh, that's the major project going on right now. Other than that, I don't really have anything for you.
Okay, everything's running smooth?
Uh, yeah, we got some hiccups here and there, but nothing out of, out of the ordinary.
Nothing you can't handle.
Nothing I can't handle.
There you go.
So, uh, no, everything, um, everything's going as I would expect it to go, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Ben. Thanks, sir.
Mr. Pell.
Um, just in case you didn't know, the pending case, the price for support of commissioners, the Supreme Court granted transfer. Um, so, the summary judgment that was initially denied by the judge in trial court and upheld by the appellate court has been vacated and it'll be set for hearing in a couple months. So that is probably good news, that they're gonna hear it, and, uh, I'll let you know more as I find, as the case progresses.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Is there anybody here at the county council? No. We'll go on to, uh, mail, do we have any mail?
Yeah, um, I had an update that I received after our last meeting from Corey's Long Care on what he.
Well, this is a, this report of what?
What he's been working on, what he's been doing.
What he done, and when he done the, the cemeteries that he's been maintaining.
Yeah. Um, the, uh, other piece of mail, um, well, I may have a second here. The other piece of mail we received was from Umba, and, uh, this was a notification about the, it's a tax impact statement that Umba prepared on behalf of the Connersville Redevelopment Commission, um, where they were looking at the, uh, TIF area or tax increment financing. And, um, if anybody is interested in looking at that, but they do give that, my, my man, I don't know what, did they, did that, anything happen?
Yeah, they passed all that last night.
Okay. You know, my biggest, my biggest concern just has been, um, what will, because I, I, we've never had a TIF district before, and my concern is that, um, as being known by the government, that is zero. You, usually you have some kind of, um, an assessment on it, so that's at zero right now. So that means that everything from here on can be what they say TIF, can be included in that tax increment financing. But if the entire assessment for that property, uh, is included in our, in our, um, gross assessment, then that will kind of, that will, um, drive down our rates, but yet we won't be any, collecting any tax on that, on that, um, assessment.
You would kind of assume that, would be.
They don't deduct that, do they, Kathy, from the assessment? When you, when you do a TIF, and we haven't had one before, and I didn't know whether you had in your training where they had discussed that. So that is a concern about how it's gonna affect us overall.
That's something we have no control over.
No, we don't. And this was, um, this was in regards to the local drug-free communities fund, and, uh, this is information that I will pass on to the council, so I don't think it needs any action by you.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Do we have nothing in regard to any action?
No.
Old business, we have none. New business, Adrian else. Where is Adrian?
I'll, I'll see if they give him a call.
You want, you want Sharon to, you want Sharon to report?
Oh, there she is.
We'll bypass him for the minute, go on to the next item, Kathy Rose.
I didn't have any paperwork in your box, I was waiting for just a second quote, but this is, um, is on outsourcing printing of our Form 11s. And, uh, does someone have two? Yeah, I do.
No, no, I don't.
Oh, okay.
Is it two different places?
You wanna borrow mine?
No, you can use my. Six here. Um, Shirley Weiss approached me on this, and, um, about maybe, uh, being a, a front runner and outsourcing our printing. If we mail Form 11s, I'll mail approximately 14,000 parcels, and a lot of these parcels, we can stuff up to five in one envelope and maybe we have another envelope, that's for 46 cents, and another envelope, we mail everything first class, the next size is 66 cents, and after that, it would depend on how many we stuff in a big envelope. But she wanted, maybe I could ask our office if we could just try this to, um, see if maybe, um, we had, we were in touch with this Masters Touch, or rather, they were in touch, and they're, they're out of Washington, Spokane, Washington, but they also do a lot of work for counties. They work for Wayne County, I know for sure they're, they mail their tax statements for them. They'll, uh, they'll go into the system, pull out the information, they'll print it there, and they'll mail it out. And starting next year, they're supposed to have a, a different kind of procedure for, she was put a, like a bar cover at the bottom in order to do bulk mailing, which I don't know, we don't bulk mail because we don't have enough to be able to buy the, the.
Permit.
Permit for. So we've just always mailed first class. So, and there's, and they really, one thing too, I just kind of made it for your thought, if it's just you had this information today, if you wanna think about it too, but, um, instead of, we would print and do it in our office and mail it out, and it would take a couple weeks to do it and run it. It, our postage was running with some remails, almost like rounded to $4,300 to mail these Form 11s, and anything we get back from, uh, anything moved, so we would re-mail them. So it would cost us $4,300 to mail everything out. Also, it would cost, um, maybe around $500 to buy the envelopes, the, um, the paper, the toner, uh, some labels, and the printing cost of just printing the paper also, so it's around, around the high $500. So it, and that was not counting labor, so that's almost at $4,700. The one quote, we, we're kind of looking at this Masters Touch, and you have this Worrel, they're out of Indianapolis. They outlined on the front page, we've got the second quote, we were really looking at Masters Touch, but they're saying it would cost almost $4,000, like $10 to go ahead with an estimate of mailing the, um, mailing all the Form 11s. And then you look back here on page, uh, let's see, one, two, three, the fourth page, they have an estimate, total estimate of $7,838 would be for the postage and preparation. And I heard that they were higher than this Masters Touch. This Masters Touch would cost, uh, when you look at it, it would be 11, like almost $1,200 to process it, be the processing it and putting the, uh, inserting and mailing. In the postage, if you go by the estimate of this company, they didn't have an exact postage, it would, it would be, um, almost $5,200 for them to mail it and process it, stuff it, print it, and stuff it and mail it. Uh, you know, maybe right now that wouldn't be an immediate savings we have right now, we, we budget like $6,000 for postage because it takes that much to mail. But, you know, Shirley was really talking to them too and thinking outside the box. It's, eventually what they do here at Masters Touch that they don't do with this Worrel is email. So if we mail out these Form 11s and we tell them that, would you like to have these emailed to you in the future, then they could include, they could contact either us or this Masters Touch with their email address, and then next year, we could email them, it, it would be at a lot less price and you wouldn't have the postage, we'd still have the processing charge. I almost think, I don't know what the charge was on that, but it'd be a lot cheaper. So those that want to get the print copy will go ahead and, they'll send out the mail, those that want the email, they'll send it via email, and if their email changes or their accounts close for some reason, then it's notified and they automatically get a print copy. So no matter, they'll, they'll get a copy whether it's emailed or printed. And in the end, over time, just thinking that it may be less expensive to go ahead with that for the future, where that would be more cost savings instead of mailing it out all the time, and give companies and individuals the opportunity to receive an email of a Form 11 and a printed copy. So this is something new, we've not done it before, so I thought, well, you know, I'll present it and explain it a little bit today. And really, we were asking, they don't really, if you want one, they don't really have a contract per se, but they have proposals that, well, this one, it's just the county assessor signs it, but if you feel this is something that we could look into doing, trying it this year, you're not obligated to this company, you don't sign a contract of extended time, do it this year, see how it works.
So dollars and cents, it's gonna be about a wash this first year, what you're saying? What you are gonna save is, is some labor.
And we, we have it in our postage, we didn't spend any out because we had some left over from last year, but we have $6,000. It can't be anymore. I know this one company, it's seven, it's definitely, that, that, yeah. But we could write it out of postage, I think we could do that without going to another, I know you're on council on this, but like doing another line item, we may just be able to write it out of postage. But this is with this touch, this Masters Touch, if we look at them, and it makes certain it's no more than, like I said, it looks like it's $5,200. Hopefully, we could see that this would save money in the future if we could get emails.
Let me ask a question. I know when I had, uh, talked with some companies when I was treasurer, and they talk about running the addresses through like a big database and kind of scrubbing the addresses so that, uh, they, more of them get delivered. I don't know about your Form 11s, but we had a lot of, we always, every year, had a lot of, uh, tax statements that come back, so.
See, what they do, and, well, we, we always process ours, and when we get our Form 11s, we through them and.
It's hard.
Cause you just keep bouncing back at you. What, it's come, I think, well, both of them do, and there's a, I just add a lot of extra material that they sent. It's, it's on the postal process, it's called the, um, NCOA, uh, National Change of Address. So before, they run these, they go ahead and run them through the database, and if they see that there's a different address, these people moved and sent a forwarding that we don't have, they'll go ahead and put that on there, mail it to that new address, and then give us a, like a CD of it, so that we can have it and we'll, we'll change, well, we'll go through the auditor's office. They'll change, update all the records, which would even update the treasurer's office too. So, you know, since the auditor controls it, that'll update our records, update the treasurer's records too.
So what's the latest you wanna think about?
And I don't know, I, you're Chris?
Uh-huh.
I'm Kathy Rose, I hadn't met you.
Hi, nice to meet you.
It must be you. I don't know if it would require a contract, or, that's why I thought, well, I, I just bring the material today.
It looks like it requires some sort of agreement.
Yeah.
Well, Kathy, why don't you give him what you have, let him, let him look, and in the next meeting, why he can.
So I thought, well, I don't know, since being new, I thought, oh, could, two weeks.
I guess the biggest thing is, I'm just more of a simplest, I wanna see what we spend, what we're gonna save.
Uh-huh.
And it may be a wash this year, but over the long term of what we're gonna, you know, that way the public knows that we're not outsourcing everything just cause we want to, it's for cost saving.
Yes, and, and we, yeah, so we do this in our office, they, so it's, it's about, I, I'm gonna round it to 43, just to make round numbers, on our postage, and round it up to like 500, so that's like 4,800, and that's not counting labor. So I don't know how you would look at it with the labor aspects, and, you know, they're there, we've got office, we're there. And if you wanna look at the time they spent doing it, which is about two weeks, and it wouldn't take that long to, to do these forms.
Okay. But what, you give those, the copy, what you had to, Chris?
Yes.
So he can look at it in the next meeting and report what he thinks about the legal aspects of that.
They were waiving the setup fee of 700 if you.
Yes, and I think they'll go ahead and, and we have to take longer because this being a new idea, they, they, they were, we were trying to see if maybe they would do this in an earlier time, and then they granted us till the end of August. I think they would look at the end of September, or, you know, for next month. But they were, see, this other company is including their setup fee, which is, um, on this back page, it was $450 for the setup. And then he was, over like almost $3,400 for just checking the mail and the paper and everything else that goes with it. So if we do do it, this would be the most economical company to use. Plus, they have a feature, they will email. We can look at email after a while. So, so Chris is gonna look at if we need a contract or not. Maybe I could have them.
I mean, I can.
No rush.
Can tell you now that you're gonna need, there's gonna be a contract.
A contract, okay.
But I'll look into it more and report, come back about what I think, or how it'll be, they wanna structure it.
A space for each of the commissioner's signatures?
Well, are you, are you gonna make a decision on which proposal you wanna use first?
I'm pretty much sure we, I'm pretty sure we'd go with this Masters Touch.
Okay.
Because they're, they're, I think their postage would be close to what, it's hard, it's just an estimate, and I don't want it to go over either. Like I said, it's something we can do in the office, but in the long run, if it, down the road, it'd save us money.
Okay. Let Chris look at it.
And what could I bring back for you saying that you?
I'll come see you. I mean, just if we can, we're all, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, if, if you have any other questions, let me know, and, um, like I said, this was a new, new proposal, something new for the county, but if, and other departments maybe use it, I don't know who else does mass mailing, we just do that one, but if that would help other departments overall, well, okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kathy.
Adrian?
Yes, sir. Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning.
I've left some documents for you, kind of some cleanup stuff. One was with WTH for graphic information. Basically, it's a date exchange agreement, um, with the state, it's for the state mapping project. There are no funds involved, there's no cost to the county, in fact, we receive funds. Diane of Economic Development received an editor's license for her, uh, graphic, graphic mapping, so she could add layers to that. Basically, um, all I need is a signature for you, from you, for this agreement, and then this just goes back to the state, and that's all it is. It's, uh, something that, uh, we've been graphing with a little bit, and finally talked to, uh, WTH and got this clarified. All I need is a signature.
And this is a mandated item anyway, right?
Well, it's for state mapping, it, uh, puts all of Fayette County's data into the state map, and it's a good thing.
Right.
Yes, sir.
How much we get back from the state on that?
We got 1,500. Um, I negotiated with them to get Diane an editor's license, which is about 2,500, so we talked, and that price jumped from 15 to 2,500, so I negotiated and I brought it back down for a 21-year deal.
I guess I'm confused, are we paying $1,500 for, or did you say it was all free?
It's all free, they gave us.
15,000.
1,500.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll make a motion to, uh, sign the agreement with, uh, WTH for the PIS State and Indiana Mapping Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, they're seeking agreement with state mapping. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, I need your signatures here, here, and one more on the next page. Up here. Which brings me to the next issue. Um, we had an agreement with the state for mitigation grant that was concerning the, uh, Everbridge system. It was for $18,000, and this is a little irritating to me, that two years ago, we had that agreement, they set on it for two years. Barton, uh, the meeting we were in in March with Jan Kreider and FEMA, that's when Jan informed me that they had an issue, which I still don't believe at that point in time, they didn't say anything about the agreement. What basically we have is an agreement that they looked at, and under the state's control, they wanna be absolutely sure that signatures are pure and real. Under their ideas, they thought one was a stamp. Um, they want all signatures to be clear, they basically want you to write hard so you can see the impression on the paper on the back. Uh, again, my irritation with them is why'd you take two years to say something about that? The, uh, monies there would be used and be available, I think we may be able to put part of the Everbridge in there, the weather component, but we have to resubmit this application. And basically, uh, it's been approved before, we just have to sign it again, and according to them, make sure that we make a, a physical impression upon the paper. Uh, it's third grade stuff to me, but that's, they, we all gotta go to third grade.
So we re-sign the agreement that we did have, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
And what they're saying is that the signatures that were on the paper, they felt, and I think I put a copy of Mary Moran's letter, that, um.
Somebody used a stamp.
They, they thought someone used a stamp.
Yeah.
But it took two years to say.
That would've been the prior board, right?
Yes.
Um, how much, how much does that, uh, bring us? How much does that agreement, have, have we already been paid for it, or they're now just now wanting to catch up? How much was that?
18,000.
18,000. Have we already paid that?
Well, no, it's not.
Adrian?
Yes.
Did you need another signature on here? Just, just the one signature from each of us?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Press R. I guess next I'll have the picture of somebody signing it, so they'll, they wanna be absolutely sure.
Probably 100%.
Then have a representative here to verify that it wasn't picture actually.
What Photoshop?
No. So that is the second item to, uh, re-sign.
Should I need to sign that one?
Hmm?
Should I need to sign?
Not that one, but this one you do.
We don't place feet to sign this one. So we did, we did a motion for us to re-sign the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, we re-sign the agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Now, Debbie does have to sign this one, um, signature and printed name, title and date.
Do you want us to go ahead and do that now?
Sign hard, no stamps, please. Uh, while you're doing that, um, one other issue I wanted to bring up, it has to do with communications and warning. Um. Then are we good to go here?
Yeah.
Let me show you a short movie.
It's a Disney rated?
[laughing].
I didn't bring popcorn.
Um, we've been working a lot with, uh, weather, we have, uh, annual spotter's training with the National Weather Service, we've been through that this year. Uh, one issue I talked to council person wise, and we're getting this through, is getting information to the public, one of which is internally. Um, one permission I'm requesting, Barton, we had talked about this, I wanna start putting, uh, notifications around a courthouse, physically, safe areas for tornadoes, put warning signs up and such, and I need your approval to start developing this, getting that printed, and then getting up around the courthouses, modifying the plans, putting maps, um, of the floor plan about where to go at particular places and times during, uh, severe weather. And that was one I, uh, need your permission to go forward with.
Why don't you see, see your problem?
And any, um, any information that you want on there, uh, it's just being developed right now, uh, what my layout's gonna be graphically, and then from that point on, it's just a matter of getting them printed and putting them, putting them up. And then from that point on, it's just a matter of getting them printed and putting them up.
You would have, you would have a room at least on each floor?
Several rooms. Try to direct people to the lowest level possible. Away from windows where there's more structure, a good example is bathrooms.
The reason I ask is if someone's handicapped and they're on the second floor.
Get them to an interior room and keep them away from the elevators, you know, power outlets. Elevators could stall or have any other problems and I don't want them left in there. So basically requesting your permission to go ahead with that.
I don't think we'd have any problem with notifications for safety issues. There's no problem there either.
Okay. Well, I'll follow through with that. The last issue is continuing on with emergency notification. And recently, some things have been developing. In the plan, it outlines alert notification and warning for the community during disasters and major events. During the 2013 festival, I use a lot of information for the public events and also was involved in mandatory data collection for weather for insurance purposes. Recently, we've looked at Everbridge and the state and the federal government has been looking seriously at warning concepts. And a local official made comments that we didn't have plans and we didn't have warning sirens. Well, both are not true. A, the comprehensive plan for Fayette County does include provisions for low, alert notification and warning. And that plan is updated every year and I'm getting ready to overhaul that plan. Two, the types of activations have changed. This person made comments about warning sirens. Well, warning sirens basically are dinosaurs. Very few people are doing them. The costs are prohibitive and they're not that effective. What's going on now is an integration of technologies that is right up and down. A lot of different things. You get notifications on your cell phone now. Everbridge has that capability of getting right to your very person. You can be walking anywhere. The disadvantages of warning sirens are multi. Cost is at the top of the list. What it would cost us for the programs we have versus warning sirens, it would cost about two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand dollars to do Fayette County to establish a warning sign system. Then it would be about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a year maintenance. What we have done is basically taken that concept of Everbridge and then supplement that to the point that for less than the maintenance of that warning system, we have a better process, which is Everbridge, followed by other things that are going on, which I'm going to show you here. Building up to that, we're now online with weather information. I've been working with Scott Demich at Channel 12. He's a meteorologist on what's called C WAP. It's Citizens' Weather Observing Program. My weather station is spewing data out now on Fayette County's weather. And in the near future, you're going to start seeing Fayette County pop up on the local news maps for our weather information. Uh, we're registered. We have a number, EW thirty-two ninety-one that identifies Fayette County. We're mapped in. Basically, that's what it is. And then further, a little presentation I have for you. We'll talk about where the federal government is going and what the issues are as far as alert notification and warning. We're in District Six. That's the yellow section. As we move forward, the federal government is looking at regions and areas. Communications have changed to the point that where we once had radios, we could only speak within the county and the adjacent county. Now with the eight-hundred megahertz radios, I have talked to the director in Evansville over the handheld radio. I've talked to the director of Allen County over handheld radio. Once the eight-hundred megahertz system is complete, theoretically, you'll be able to talk to California, New York. It's basically an outgrowth of the September eleventh issue where communications were one of the major problems. What we have is a simple issue that we're growing. In October, I'm applying for a low-power FM radio station that would be dedicated to emergency information, but general information when it wasn't there. Some programming can be developed locally. That in case of a disaster, when we had like the paint company fire in O2, we would be able to give precise and direct information down to a city block. We could give information down to someone's backyard. That information would be specific. It would be available over an FM radio, which virtually everyone has. I think some cell phones even have FM radio now. So a simple five-dollar radio gives you a warning system that is not matched anywhere. And to my knowledge, this has never been done in the state of Indiana, so we would be the first.
Did I misunderstand you? Are you talking about us having our own FM radio frequency to broadcast in these types of emergencies?
Yes, sir. It would be like a college radio station or a church has their radio station. It's low-power. It's meant just to cover the county. It's not meant to broadcast, you know, to a third of Indiana. It would basically cover just Fayette County, maybe the outlining areas.
Where would you locate this?
Uh, the transmitter would be in the office and we can broadcast or relay that to the tower.
Is that going to require an additional antenna on the tower?
Yes. But it could be at a lower altitude and the frequency range would not interfere. It would be realistically in the high eighties, low nineties megahertz. And nothing on that tower is coming down that low. The lowest would be the VHF that's used for police fire and everything else, and that's one in the one-hundred-and-fifty megahertz range, so it's way above it. The spectrum is basically with narrowband technology. They would be so far apart that there would not be.
Okay. That, that was my question because we have, we have some issues with the tower and the antennas. I'm just trying to make sure we didn't further complicate it, so excuse me for interrupting.
No, no, no. Well aware of that. Um, the issues have come to the point that we now have technology moving and the research we've been doing over years has led to this point. And the beauty of having a low-power FM station, a lot of critical information can be given to the public during emergencies and non-emergencies. There are a lot of things that go on every day that people need to be aware of. I recently just had a bout with a stomach virus. People need to be told about things without being panicked. That information can be given out. When my daughter was born, Ben's latest child, when I took my daughter home, the one thing they did not give me was a manual. You know, how do you deal with this thing? You know, yeah, you change the diaper and feed it, but you know, all these little details.
Wait till she's a teenager.
That's not allowed. The, the issues are simply this. We have a lot of critical information that really isn't there. Programs for people to come in and talk about the community, other issues for promote the community, vital information to your home, information you may want to get out. Those are all programs that can be done on a regular basis and entertainment's also there. So it's a multitude. It's a platform that we can definitely use and it's got a low cost. Now, the government has what's called IPaaS. It's Integrated Public Warning, Alert and Warning that is coming. Everbridge is the tip of the iceberg and there are a lot of things coming that lead to that.
When disasters strike, whether they are natural, accidental, or man-made, it has always been vital that they be reported accurately and in a timely fashion to those who may be in danger. It is the policy of the United States to have an effective, reliable, integrated, flexible, and comprehensive system to alert and warn the American people. The Integrated Public Alert and Warning System, or IPaaS, is the solution for effective public alerts and warnings. IPaaS allows alerting authorities to write their own message using open standards. The message is then authenticated by the IPaaS Open Platform for Emergency Networks, or OPEN, to be delivered simultaneously through multiple pathways, reaching as many people as possible to save lives and protect property. IPaaS must ensure that the president can reach the American people, but it recognizes that most alerts and warnings are issued at a state and local level. IPaaS alerts and warnings are location-specific and therefore more relevant to those receiving the alert. And through the use of open standards, such as the Common Alert Protocol, IPaaS allows for growth and integration with future consumer technologies. How do alerting authorities send an alert or warning to IPaaS OPEN? In addition to the president, alerting authorities include state, local, territorial, and tribal public safety officials who are designated within their level of government as an authority responsible for communicating emergency alerts and warnings to the public. After completing FEMA-sponsored training, alerting authorities will be authenticated for access to IPaaS. They will then be able to use Common Alerting Protocol-compliant emergency and incident management tools to create location-specific alerts that are scaled to cover areas as big as their entire jurisdiction or much smaller areas within their jurisdiction. Once created, the alert will then be sent to IPaaS OPEN. How is an alert routed by IPaaS OPEN? Once the alert is received from the alerting authorities, IPaaS OPEN authenticates the source and validates that the alert input conforms to the Common Alerting Protocol standard and IPaaS profile. This provides a standard for everyone across all levels of government, as well as the private sector. While older systems relied on audio and text-only systems, IPaaS OPEN makes picture and video feeds possible and allows for the seamless incorporation of emerging technologies. Once the alert message is authenticated by IPaaS OPEN, the message is simultaneously delivered to all IPaaS-compliant public alerting systems. Emergency alerts will be delivered across multiple pathways to the American people. Alerts will be delivered by the Emergency Alert System using AM, FM, and satellite radio, as well as broadcast, cable, and satellite TV. The Commercial Mobile Alert System will send alerts to cell phones and other commercial mobile network devices based on their location, even if cellular networks are overloaded and can no longer support calls, texts, and emails. The National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration will deliver alerts through the National Weather Service All Hazards Radio. Alerts will be available on the internet through web-based applications such as email, instant messaging, and RSS feeds in any web browser. State, local, territorial, and tribal alerting systems, such as emergency telephone networks, giant voice sirens, and digital road signs, may also receive alerts from IPaaS OPEN. And future alerting technologies and systems can easily be integrated into IPaaS. When disaster strikes, IPaaS allows emergency managers and alerting authorities at all levels to send one message to more people through multiple pathways to save lives and protect property. No matter where you are, at home, at school, at work, or even on vacation, you can get life-saving alerts. IPaaS, emergency alerts at the speed of life. Get alerts. Stay alive.
Now, the beauty of this is it's an expansion of what's going on locally, that, what I just talked about. And the federal government is chiming in with even more data that integrates the two. In a given situation, I would be able to put data out that went through the Everbridge system, that went through the Emergency Alert System on television, through cable, through radio, through our local FM station. All this data is going to be streaming. And if it is just local, I will have the option of going through the National Weather Service, putting a message out, and it would go through the local radios, local weather radios. And with the same technology, that information is only going to be heard in Fayette County. It's not going to be heard everywhere. So this is a huge jump in where we were and we're moving forward and will give us probably the best capabilities we've ever had. Yes, sir.
So hypothetically, with the truck accident that we had on with the spill.
Yes.
If this system was in place, everyone in Fayette County would get an email or like a text message.
Yes.
And then the people who needed to evacuate the immediate area would be told, you need to evacuate. They would get additional information to say, hey, you need to leave your home. You know, is that pretty much how that's going to work?
Yes, and the beauty of that is when you start pulling in the radio side, you'll be able to tell traffic where not to go. So you can start avoiding traffic jams and different situations that are going to create problems for the responder. It really doesn't have a limit to it when you look at all the components. And with the capabilities of sending video, that really, like with you three, uh, critical information could go just to you, that only you need to see and know about and make decisions on. So we could be in a telephone call and you could have a remote meeting. And I can get data to you that no one else is going to see, but you would need it to make a legal decision. So it's virtually whatever you want to have as your own limitation. And I don't think, at this point in time, I don't see any limits to it. And that's, and the one thing has to be understood that a lot of our system can be used for non-emergencies, such as the 2013 festival. We have the ability to communicate, make things go a lot smoother, makes it easier. So when problems do crop up, it's known in that small sector and then key people know about it, which is what it's all about and follows along the lines of NIMs, which I would highly suggest departments start using more because it solves a lot of problems. And that's basically it for me.
Well, thanks, Adrian.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
I need to get those signature pages back. That's the executive order for IPaaS. Thank you.
Get me copies.
Cemetery board.
Good morning.
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 First item on the list is signs, which, the reason why we have that itemized at this time is for direction. At an earlier meeting, we had asked the commission about signs. Knoll Town, if anybody hasn't had a chance to see the sign that was put up at Knoll Town, that was purchased through DNR. Now, that sign cost approximately two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Very nice. But we was thinking of other ways for cost-effective for the cemeteries that, you know, are in the corner of the fields that are way off the road. And you gave us direction to the county garage, I believe, and see if they could make some signs. If that is the case, we would like to know what's the direction that we go about doing it. Do we come to you as far as what signs we would like to have redone and show you the ones that need to be redone because of deterioration? Or do we go to Mr. Havlin and work with him?
Probably need to come to the commissioners, I'd say. I'd say probably need to come to the commissioners and see what we want to do.
Thank you.
You need to come to the commissioners, I would think.
Okay. So do you want us to bring the actual sign to you, show you the sign that needs to be done or just a picture?
Just a picture.
Just a picture, yeah. Okay, the second item is the Mount Zion Flagpole Project. We have confirmed, Corinne has confirmed through Jerry Gobin, that the Mount Zion is owned by Fayette- owned by Fayette County. Upon that confirmation, we did call the Director of Special Initiatives at the DNR, which is Jeanie Reagan Dinaius, and I hope I didn't slaughter her name for record. Her last name is spelled D-I-N-I-U-S. And that was to confirm the proper procedure of the flagpole project. At this time, we are asking permission to set up a fund for donations for Fayette County Pioneer Cemetery flagpoles and foundations. We respectfully request that this line item be set up as soon as possible so Mr. Steve Moller can proceed with his project. When established, how do we withdraw from it? Or in Mr. Moller's case, how does he?
Would that be a situation where they would just have a line item put in?
Well, would have to be an appropriation. Request the council.
So all donations would come to the courthouse? Is that what you're talking about? Lenny?
Yes. Every, every donation, monetary donation or, and
There may be.
We would want you guys to, you know, make sure everything's taken care of as far as that.
The establishment of a, uh, of a fund, Debbie just said there may already be a place that that money can be deposited to. And as far as getting the money out, you would just go through the normal voucher procedure like you do for everything else.
Okay.
And if you're going to do it for a particular sign or something like that, it'd be kind of nice to either, you can come to the meeting or you can just send us a picture of it, whatever the other commissioner's pleasure is, whatever's convenient, okay, that this is the sign and it's got my picture on it or something like that, you know, and uh, that's what we would like to put up at such and such a place. If you want to come, then that's, that's great too.
Okay. Um, so the question that I have is, we don't have to have a, there may already be a line item appropriated for a flagpole project?
No.
No?
No.
You're, you're getting funds and line items mixed up. You have to have a separate fund set up and then within that fund, you would have to set up an appropriation.
Okay. And that would be done through the council first?
Yeah. I'm, I'm trying to see if there is a, a donation fund set up. I'm, I'm sure it might be, but. Could be here and I can't see it. It's so tiny. I thought at one time there might have been. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not see, here, no. I'm not seeing it, but that doesn't mean, it just wouldn't have a lot of activity. I can double-check that money and see. If not, there could be a separate fund set up to receive donations to and pay out.
Okay. Now, if there is no fund, is that something that we go to the council and ask, or do we ask the commissioners if there could be a fund set up? What's, what's the correct procedure on that?
Here, there is one. Cemetery donations. It's got, and this has been in here probably for a while. It has $440 in it.
So you can just donate to that fund?
Yeah.
Okay. So it doesn't have to be a specific flagpole project fund. You can just go to
No, you could set up an appropriation for that.
Okay.
And appropriate whatever monies once you, you know, once you know that there's enough in there to pay for that, then you can appropriate monies to a project.
Okay. I got that clear. Appreciate that. Thanks. Okay. Any other questions on the Mount Zion Flagpole?
All right.
Item three is Old Orange Cemetery. One of the cemetery commission's responsibilities is to report to the county commissioners, commissioners on all, on any and all work that is performed in our county cemetery. Example, volunteers, contractors, et cetera. After Mr. John Walters, owner-operator of Graveyard Grimmers, funded his restoration completion of Old Orange, we did our follow-up report for the county commissioners. Okay. One, stones or markers, and you'll hear me refer to stones, which is markers too, so they're the same. That were clean, were very nice. Markers that were straightened make the cemetery look real nice. What was performed was in a timely manner. Repairs done to broken stones looked professional. However, in 2012, Mr. Walters states he stabilized 146 stones. Recent completion from the 213 contract, Mr. Walters states 167 stones have been cleaned. That's a total of 313 stones worked on in two years. 161 burrows have been recorded in Old Orange Cemetery according to the state records. Our count of markers is 213. Of those markers, 32 are granite, two are flagstone. Three markers have plastic still wrapped around them, and that's, as seen in picture, labeled "I". One marker has, the base is cracked and broken and has not been repaired, also as seen in picture "J". One obelisk, which is the headstone for Sarah Crawford, has Miss Crawford's footstone, as seen in picture, labeled "K". This is placed under the right corner of the base. Miss Crawford's footstone was leaning up against her headstone in fall of 2012. And that's also in a picture under "K". There's four different pictures in that location. Five markers are laying down, which are all broke but have not been repaired, as seen in pictures labeled "L". Now, that's just one picture. There's others. That's just an example of one of them. Bellstraw was left up against outside of the fence, which has killed the grass underneath it, as seen in picture "G". We don't know if he just left it that he used to replace over areas that needed seeded. There are several foot markers have been put up against head markers and not reset, as seen in picture "N". And that's just one example. There's several of them. They just laid them up against the headstones and they didn't reset them. One marker had been uncovered and re-covered. And if you look at the picture, that is labeled "O", you can see where, um, from the headstone at the top picture, that is facing east. And you can see that the area that's been disturbed. And if you look at it and you pull the side up, there's a stone underneath of it and just been covered. Okay. Upon conclusion, we as a cemetery commission suggest that the county commission take into consideration when a contractor submits a bid proposal, it should contain, one, detailed information of stone marker that work is to be performed on. Example, location of the marker, condition, proposed repair needed done to it. Itemize each marker that is in the proposed bid. If possible, verify through cemetery commission on proposed work, repair to be done. Kind of work with this so we know which ones are being worked on. And four, record all work repaired done for final report on completion of said contract. And that's what we have on that item. Do I have any questions for Old Orange Cemetery?
Have you talked to Mr. Walters?
Have I talked to him?
Concerning, concerning this report?
No.
Of what, of what, of what you're reporting on his work?
No.
Okay.
Okay. And then final item is on the resignation of Commissioner Doug Keller. I had some correspondence between Doug, me and some of the other commissioners, and that's what's in the packet. The first notification that he was wanting to resign, if you look through all that and you get a chance to, was June 3rd. And he reconfirmed that on June 25th, and you can read his correspondence and the reasoning why. And that's just, I know that there was a concern at your last meeting as to why there was no information. He did say that he was resigning and he'd sent a letter to you and apparently you haven't received it. In that correspondence, he also said that he would send it certified mail. So I don't know if he'd received it there too. So that's just the correspondence that he had had with us.
Well, it says in this, it says here, it says, "I have effectively resigned from the commission." And I assume my letter did not make it to the commissioners and have not heard from them. To me, that pretty much sums it up. If, if he, if he had any questions, he'd have brought it to us, or if he didn't want to resign, he would have said so. The question is, what is your plans to replace him? Because you have to have five of you.
That's commissioner's call.
Well, at that time, you know, we would, you know, see what your pleasure is first. And what you had read was from the June 25th correspondence, he'd actually stated in uh, June 3rd that he was also going to resign. So that was the, the first correspondence I have with him, that where he verified that that's what he wanted to do.
I would accept it. I've, I've tried to contact Mr. Keller. He's been pretty busy, I guess, so.
Well, if you, if you have time to read the correspondence, you can see that we have very effectively tried to communicate with him and pretty much keep him involved. And, you know, his health reasons are a big concern. Any other questions?
No. I think so at this time.
That completes our report on cemetery. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. We'll take it under advisement and decide what we want to do about a replacement for Mr. Keller. United Way Thermometer, Jennifer Harris.
Hello?
Good morning.
How are you? I would like to request permission for the United Way to place a sign approximately five feet tall and three feet wide on the courthouse wall. It'd be a thermometer sign which shows our goal of 45,000. And then as we receive donations, we would mark the thermometer.
You've done this before.
It's been done in the past. I don't think the last few years, but in the past.
I see no problem.
I move to allow them to put the sign and subscribe on the courthouse wall. You go put it on the central opening sign?
Uh-huh.
Okay. I move to allow that.
Second.
Didn't Zane say about the United Way sign? I don't see any problem. Put all the favor say aye?
Aye.
opposed?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Thank you.
Do we have any patients concerned? Anybody want to make any comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to
Oh, claims and payroll.
Approve the claims and the payroll.
Sorry. I thought you were going to turn.
Oh, I did. Uh, second. Go ahead. I want to say something.
It's been moved to second. The claims and the payroll be approved. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry it. Mr. Zane, you got something else you want to say?
Yeah. I wanted to uh, thank Mr. Selkey for all his work, for everything he's done for the county and the radio station. And today's your last official day and I hope retirement as well to you. And we loved having you around. So good luck in the future.
It's been a pleasure covering the commissioners for 18 years.
It's been 18 years.
Got in the cabinet, the news paper, the past seven, the radio.
I know Jackie and Carol won't know what to do without you over there coming in and in the mornings and stirring stuff up and getting things going on. They, they just, they'll feel lost.
Just getting your report, right?
It's all right there, Bart.
I, I agree with Zane. I've known, uh, known you for a long time. You've always been good, been fair, and I really appreciate that. We'll miss you.
I appreciate that, gentlemen.
Who brought his gold watch? Did somebody? Chris, I think you were supposed to have brought Mr. Selkey's gold watch.
You want a highlighter?
Any other comments? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second to adjourn. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry.